So it is, whatever it is, Wednesday, October 2nd, 10 o'clock in the morning because I am behind. So we are going to go ahead and do that follow-up video thing. So I've got a number of things to do and we will get through as many of them as I possibly can in time allotted, which is about an hour and a half. Here we go. So first of all, I actually did get clarification, so my apologies on the last video. But what's going to happen is for polyatomic ions, we will hold you responsible, yes, to all of the hypochlorite, chlorate, 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 perchlorate. But we will not test on the bromine versions or the iodine versions. So essentially, really what this means is that we're just going to use just the table in the textbook. So yes, to the table in the textbook, which does include a fair number. But there are a couple more in Alex, but we are not going to use those. We might use them and say like, hey, tell me about the structure of this. Like, we might use them, but we're not going to ask you to name them. But yes, yes, to anything that's in the textbook, which does include all of the ones with chlorine, but not the ones with bromine or iodine. So I got clarification on that after the exam review. Okay, then I've got mostly calculation stuff. So, but before I forget, there's also this small question, would only transition metals be required to use Roman numerals? So I guess I have to start with naming. So the thing is, is that the question asks, would only transition metals be required to do that? And the hard thing is, is that this subset in here are transition metals. And so the difficult thing, though, is that there are other things that definitely need Roman numerals, especially things like 10 and lead, other things in here as well. But for example, let's actually look at lead for a minute. You can absolutely have lead for oxide and lead to oxide. So the idea, I think, behind, hey, I probably only need these for transition metals is a good one. Because certainly when you look at the periodic table, that's where we're going to pull most of the elements that need to use Roman numerals. But that's, so conceptually, that's not a bad place to begin. But the other thing to point out is the fact that silver is technically a transition metal, right? It's in that block, but silver always has a plus one charge. Only ever a plus one charge. So again, the idea behind, hey, if I have a transition metal, is it likely that I need to use Roman numerals? Yes, that's a true statement. Keeping in mind that silver is an exception to that. Zinc and cadmium and aluminum are the other exceptions. I realize aluminum is not in your transition metal set and we could have a philosophical debate about zinc and cadmium. But again, that idea fundamentally is a good place to begin. But you can't actually say that. Both because there's things outside the transition metal block that still need Roman numerals and because there's things inside the D block that do not need Roman numerals. But again, as like a, if I had to randomly guess, the majority of them do, but not all of them. Okay, so we talked about would only transition metals be required to use Roman numerals. Let's go ahead and do calculations now. So we talked about naming, now we're going to go ahead and do calculations. I'm just going to start from the beginning. So the bottom line with equations is we're going to use the same potentially useful information sheet. So you do get it again. And we are lazy. That's not really the reason why we do it that way. But basically, it's the exact same one. It's the exact same one. So we're not going to rearrange it, we're not going to delete things. You get the exact same potentially useful information page you got on the first. We print out a brand new copy, right? So it's clean to start from, but the same one, the same information, all in the same location. We don't change that. You can think about it as us being lazy. That's really not the motivation. But whatever, whatever makes you feel better. But that's, that's the short answer to that one. But basically, what I'm going to do is one of each kind of calculation. Yeah. So let's go ahead and also practice a little bit of nomenclature as we do that. I'm looking at this really tiny word you probably can't read. So can you go over the calculations like grams to atoms of compounds to a specific ion? I think that's a great plan. Let's do something like that. I'll make this bigger in just a minute. How many oh, about chloride ions are there in, we'll just do five grams of iron three chloride? I spelled chloride correctly? Nope. An apologies for my phone going off. Honestly, it's on silent so much of the time that I honestly get confused when it suddenly makes a noise. Is that me? What? So the other reason I like this is because we're going to have to do a few different things in here. So first of all, we are going for chloride ions. So we need to think of these like atoms. So we're basically going to do same similar calculations as grams to atoms. So similar, probably not exactly the same, similar calculation as going from grams to atoms. So because of that, we're going to go from grams to moles to, in this case, we're actually going to go to formula unit. And then we're going to go to ions. So we'll walk through this, no worries. So first of all, we're going to look at grams to moles. First thing we're going to do is grams to moles. If we're going to do grams to moles before, we would use atomic mass. So now I need molar mass. Well, for molar mass, for my formula, it tells me I have iron three chloride. So that's iron with a plus three charge. And then chloride, there's chlorine in group 7A. It only needs one electron to be like argon, so it's be with a negative one charge. So to make this cancel out, I'm going to have one iron and three chloride ions. So to demonstrate then that mathematically for my iron, sorry for all the scrolling, 55.85 grams per mole. And then I have three chlorines, so that's three times 35.45 grams per mole. And all I'm going to do is add these together with the handy dandy calculator that's behind me, but that's okay. One of the things that as we progress, I'm always grateful for is using headphones because that means that there's still some odd sounds that I can hear, but you can't hear. Sorry, I was double checking. I have surprisingly another periodic table next to me, so that was me double checking, but I got the chlorine atomic mass correct since I was trying to avoid scrolling back and forth so that you don't hurt your eyes. Grams per mole, grams per mole. So that is molar mass. So keep in mind, we can also just ask you to do a molar mass calculation. That's absolutely an option that we have. So there's my molar mass. Then I'm going to take those five grams and say that there are 162.2 grams in one mole. This is of the whole thing. This is of iron three chloride. Then from that potentially useful information page, which I don't think I have on here, so I can't actually flip to it. Sorry about that. Sorry, this was my, this was the first exam review. I don't see it. I don't know that we had it up by then. Anyway, so we would go to our potentially useful information page and say that for every one mole, we have 6.022 times 10 to the 23rd formula units. Now, the reason why I'm saying formula units here is I'm basically saying that I have sets of this F E C L three. I have a lot of them. But when you say that you have five grams of this stuff, it's essentially a repeating unit. So basically, when we blow that up to say, cool, we can do that in grams, we can do that in moles, I want to know about the individual units. I'm still talking about the whole thing. So to me, I think about this like little toy cars. Do I have little, I have little toys near me. So granted, this is a stuffed animal, it doesn't work cry as well. But this is a little bee and it's got little antenna and it's got little wings. So this is one whole piece. But in my whole piece, I can actually think about this as still having two antenna. And I can think about this as having two wings in my whole piece. If I had a little toy car, I'd use a toy car and I'd point out the four wheels that it has. But I have a little stuffed animal, my little stuffed animal has two little antenna and it has two wings. So I get, when I talk about a unit, I talk about this whole thing, even though it's got little individual pieces that we could still point out. So formula units. Then in one formula unit, I'm just going to write out of this thing, I have three chloride ions. So this is that part where when we look at the question, I want to know about chloride ions. That's what I want to know about. So I need to represent what's going on with my chloride ions. And for every one of the whole thing, I get three of them. So same game with my little bee. If I want to know how many wings I was getting, I should have two wings for every unit. I should have two antenna for every unit. So same idea is that I'm trying to think about the little pieces that are part of it. But I can count the individual ones if I wanted to. So in this case, we're trying to narrow it down and talk about, well, how many chloride ions do you get to go along with that? And the answer there is three. So I'm going to multiply everything across the top. I'm going to divide by everything on the bottom. I should get a pretty big number because we're doing ions. I'm going to switch back to a pen and I'm going to get 5.57 times 10 to the 22nd chloride ions. Something else I should point out, the, that multiplying by three can actually come at different places. So some people will go ahead and put the three a little bit earlier in the mathematics and that also is fine. I honestly started putting it at the end only after I started teaching because what I found is that my other steps that we just did line up very well with what we did back on exam one. Start with grams, go from grams to moles, go from moles to atoms. So those are those three steps exactly the same way as we did them in exam one, just now we're using a molar mass instead of an atomic mass. So it's a little bit different, but otherwise all the pieces, all those units are the same. And then all we're actually doing is adding one more step on the end to say, ah, if it wanted ions, how many ions are there in this whole thing? And we're just going to multiply by that number at the very end. But depending on your thought process, some people will go ahead and before you multiply by the giant number, some people will just move this. And they'll move it to be, to be over here. And you know what? That works just fine. The beautiful thing about multiplication and division is they are communicative properties. I never remember if I'm saying that correctly. And because of that, you can do them frankly in any order and it doesn't matter. So I do that at the end to try to demonstrate that as far as the process goes, the process is extremely similar to what we were doing on exam one. We're essentially just making sure we're using molar mass, not atomic mass. And then we're adding one more step. But otherwise, it's the same idea. But other people will go ahead and be like, well, while I'm thinking through this, they'll put it somewhere else and then all works because as long as you're multiplying by the number of ions, life is good. So that gets me through something. Grams to a specific ion. Ha ha. Yay. Also, for mathematics, I actually did two different things. I did a molar mass calculation that was in there. So that was taking my iron three chloride and telling you what the molar mass was. We went ahead and used it, but we did it. And then we did grams to moles to formula units to ions. So I don't quite know how to put that in there as an equation. But there we go. So mathematically, we actually did two things and one question. Next up, percent composition. And we are going to do this forwards and backwards. So I'm going to put percent composition forwards. And I'm also going to write out here percent composition backwards. So percent composition forwards. You know what? Since I have iron three chloride, I'm just going to use that example. Nah, do something different. Because I always try to get in trouble. Let's do, let's do polyatomic ions. We've got one of those. I didn't know he was so thrilled. What is the, I'm going to make it bigger to make it percent. Oh, by mass, because we could call it that instead. Making it bigger so everybody can see what we're talking about. And again, I am going to go ahead and try to put as many of these all in words as possible. Mostly because during the Monday night review, some people were concerned with like, how else can nomenclature be incorporated? So this is also a way for me to answer that question. So what's the percent by mass or percent composition? Those are the same thing. Of hydrogen is in ammonium carbonate. So yes, you have to know what ammonium carbonate is then. Whoopsies. So that's the ammonium ion. And this is the carbonate anion. So ammonium carbonate looks like this. I need two of those for every carbonate. By the way, this is still an ionic compound. Ironic bonding was on the list, but to talk about, but essentially because this is held together with charges, even though each one of these individually is a molecule, the ammonium ion is a molecule, the carbonate anion is a molecule. There are covalent bonds in there. The thing that actually holds the ammonium ion to the carbonate anion is just coulombic attractions are the electrostatic attractions is the fact that one of them is positively charged and one of them is negatively charged. So that's what keeps them together. So this whole thing is an ionic compound, even though there are covalent bonds in it. Yay. That was sarcasm. But I want to know the percent by mass of hydrogen. So first of all, I have to do the the molar mass for the whole thing. So in this whole thing, I have two nitrogens, I have eight hydrogens, I have one carbon and I have three oxygens. So when we talk about how many there are, I basically distribute this to, to tell me how many of each there are. I again, I'm just going to grab, since I'm sitting next to a periodic table, I'm not going to scroll back up again, but I am getting these off of a periodic table. So you are more than welcome to grab your favorite periodic table as you do this one. And also, I'll go ahead and show you the little trick that I use to make this a little bit faster. Not really certain that it's worth the speed. But I will show you one of the things that I usually do when it's just me to make things a little bit easier. Now, because this is percent composition, I am actually going to go ahead and also because I am using this calculator, the cute little adorable scientific calculator that I undoubtedly got off of Amazon for $20 or less. I say undoubtedly because anytime I have the pink one, sometimes the pink one is the most expensive one, but if I have it, it's because it was the cheapest one. Sometimes the pink thing is the cheap one. Who knows? One times 12.01 is that, three times 16, you'd think I'd have that memorized, but I don't, 48. And now we add all of these together, 48 plus 12.01 plus 8.064 plus 28.02 96.094. So this is my molar mass. And we can use the phrase molar mass for both covalent compounds and ionic compounds. Then because I'm doing percent composition or percent by mass, the problem tells me I want hydrogen, which means I want hydrogen's contribution to the total. So therefore, I'm going to take that 8.064 divided by 96094, multiply that by 100% and that's going to be my percent composition. And get something like 8.4% hydrogen. Hydrogen's pretty small. Also, you can see in here that my molar mass was almost 100 and my hydrogen is eight. So since we're doing percentages, getting a percent that's pretty close to 8% when my total mass was pretty close to 100 should, should make sense as we go through. And that one's kind of nice just to do because since you've got all of these numbers out here, it's not a bad thing to kind of look back and be like, so is my number at least kind of close to what I expected? Like, if it's the smallest number in the list, is the percentage relatively small? If it's the biggest number in the list, is it at least relatively large? Things, things like that, to kind of think through the logic. I mentioned speeding this up. So this will make some people happy, this will make some people anxious. So you figure out if you like it or not. So I'm a biochemist by training. In biochemistry, we deal with really large molecules, really, really large molecules. And so when we're doing molar mass, we usually round. You might notice that all of these numbers here, especially because we're in that carbon, nitrogen, oxygen, fluorine, we actually round these. Now, that being said, there's ones we don't round because they're too, they're too close in the middle. Chlorine, 35.45, that's 35 and a half. Iron, also the 55, 55.85, maybe I have that one. But basically, as a biochemist, I honestly, I always, I always run those. So whenever I do y'all's exam, I actually would do it as 28 plus 8 plus 12 plus 48 and then divide that by eight. Now, I do want to show you what happens when you do this because this is the reason why some people will like this and some people will not like this. When this happens, I now get 8.3%. This number and this number are not identical. However, if it's a multiple choice question, that 8.3 is going to be the closest number in the set to what you're looking for. So this is, this is the caveat, is rounding can make you go faster, but you have to know yourself. If you are going to be unhappy that you're not getting exactly the correct multiple choice answer, then don't do this. Because when we write your exam, we use this periodic table. And this, this is the way that that works. But if you were looking for like, ah, typing in all of the numbers, especially carbon, nitrogen, oxygen, fluorine, hydrogen, you can, you can round those puppies as long as you're okay with being off a little bit, because you will be off a little bit. So that's, that's a thing you can do, but just, just be aware that you won't get exactly the answer. But on a multiple choice question, you're going to be close enough. Okay, so we did percent composition forwards. Great. Now percent composition backwards. For those of y'all in my class, I am going to grab an example from one of our workshops because I'm already doing this video on Wednesday. I'm starting to run out of time in my life. So a sample contains 2.4 grams calcium, 1.2 grams phosphorus and 2.5 grams oxygen. What is the empirical formula? So I do describe this as percent composition backwards. This is perhaps better known as empirical formula from percent composition. To each their own. The way that this works is I have basically three elements. I have calcium, phosphorus and oxygen. And I don't know what these subscripts are. So we need to figure that out. Now, this one hadn't gave me this in grams. I, the other way that this can happen is you can tell me that this is like 40%. Let's go with 40% iron and therefore 60% chlorine. If you have percentages, the easiest thing to do about that is just pretend that those are grams. The reason why you can do that is because if you are given percentages and they don't tell you how big the sample is, you essentially get to pretend that the sample is as big or as small as is convenient to you. So maybe you had a hundred gram sample and 40% of 100 is 40. If you don't have the information to know how big the sample is, you just get to assume it is whatever makes your life easier. So that, that is something you can actually use that works, that, that is how you do that problem. But I have actual grams in here and I picked this example for a reason. Let's see if we can figure out what the reason is. So the idea, though, with these is that anytime you're looking at empirical formula, these are essentially atom to atom ratios. If they're atom to atom ratios, these could also be mole to mole ratios. So I have grams and I want moles. And this feels kind of familiar. This notion that I have grams right now, but I don't want grams. I would really like to have moles. So we are going to take all three of these oxygen. I do always try to write a couple more letters when I'm doing oxygen so that I am not mistaking the letter O for a zero. I haven't come back to periodic table in a little while. So we, I need the atomic mass of calcium, which is 40.08. And I need the atomic mass of phosphorus, which is 30.96. And the atomic mass of oxygen, which is 16. So you can, of course, do these all individually. And actually, I am. So this is 40.08 grams in one mole. So my amount of calcium is 0.05988 moles. My phosphorus is 30.97 grams in a mole. So this is 1.2 divided by, 1.2 divided by 30.9697. And oxygen, 16 grams in a mole. 0.5 divided by 16. And these are moles again. So now technically, we have mole ratios, which is what our goal was. So in this whole like XYZ thing, technically, I've got calcium at 0.05988. I've got phosphorus at 0.038747. I have oxygen, 0.15625. But the goal is the empirical formula. And empirical formula means I need the lowest possible whole numbers. I have to have whole numbers and that's not what those are. So I have to fix this. So since these are not whole numbers, goal is to get whole numbers. We are going to use an algebra trick, which is essentially to say that all three of these are now already in ratios. an algebra trick, which is essentially to say that all three of these are now already in ratios. I just want whole numbers. So I'm going to divide by the smallest number in my set. And the reason for that is I want every number to be one or greater. So if I take the smallest number, the smallest number divided by itself is going to be one. And then I can adjust and hope that everything else is also a whole number. But let's see what happens in real life. I get calcium at one point five four. I get one phosphorus. Oxygen is point one five four. Darn. So I have this problem, which is that one of these is not a whole number. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to multiply everything by two. The reason why I picked two is because one point five, this point five here is essentially one half. So this is really one and a half because of this two then here. If I multiply this by two, I will get two and one, which will be three. That was not a great description of fractions. There is also a button on your calculator that has like a little, well granted, you may or may not have it. It's on my calculator, which is the fraction to decimal button. And if I put one point five in here and I hit this button, it will actually tell me that this is three over two. And again, I'm looking to multiply by whatever is in that bottom part of my fraction. For those of you curious, yes, I do know that that's called the denominator, but the bottom part of the fraction works just fine. So notice that I'm going to multiply everything by two because again, once I have that ratio, once I have my ratio in moles, I want to hang on to that ratio and I don't want to mess it up. So whatever I do to one thing, I'm going to do to all of them. That's the reason why when you divide by the smallest number, you divide everything by the exact same number. When you go to multiply anything, you multiply all of them. And so we wind up with this as our final answer. So this is our empirical formula. This is where we would, what we would ask you to find. And so we would ask you to stop. For those of you that are looking at that and they're like, where did this thing come from? If you're curious, tech, technically, yes, this is actually calcium phosphate, but we would not expect you to do this. That, that's the above and beyond extra step that we don't do on exams because all we're looking for is the empirical formula. That's the empirical formula. But if you're curious, that, that's a hundred percent how I wrote that question is I started with calcium phosphate. Okay, I've done all the math. Thanks. There's one math thing I didn't do. I can do that. Hold on. Yeah. Sorry, my brain, my brain is mathing. One moment, please. There we go. So the last, the last math thing is difficult to actually tell you what it's called. So let me write this real quick. Actually, can't we just use? No. Actually, I don't want that one. I want this to be twenty six. Changing my mind, changing my mind. Ta-da. All right. Making it bigger so you guys can actually read this. There we go. So here's the way this works. The molecular mass of a compound is twenty six. Let's just say twenty six grams per mole. Sorry. The empirical formula is CH. What is a molecular formula? So what this is relying on is the empirical formula is the lowest ratio. But we know the actual molecular mass. If I use the empirical formula, one carbon at twelve point oh one plus one hydrogen at one point oh oh eight is thirteen point oh one thirteen point oh one eight. I always told the molecular mass is twenty six. So I'm really just looking for what do I multiply this by in order to get to my actual molecular formula? Because I know I'm in the lowest that I possibly can be right now. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to take the molecular mass, which is twenty six. My CH is thirteen point oh one eight. So thirteen times something is equal to twenty six. X is going to be about two. It's not exactly two because I rounded, but I get one point nine nine seven. That's about two. Which means that my molar mass, my, my actual molecular formula should be C two H two. So really, all I'm doing is I'm using the molar mass of the empirical formula and comparing it by dividing with the molecular mass. So I'm basically taking the molecular mass, which is twenty six, dividing it by the empirical, so this is molecular, dividing it by the empirical mass, whatever that was. And I get a multiplier out. And the multiplier then is what I use to figure out what I multiply all of my subscripts by. Whatever that's going to be. So you'll find a question like this on basically any of our old exams. Y'all have access to the fall twenty three exam. For those of you that have decided to go back farther in time, you'll find something like this on all of them. Because really, this is the way that we test on empirical versus molecular formula. So a little bonus math in there. Okay, so I think I've done all the equations because I think I've done all the math that should be on the exam. I'm making that face for just a minute because I'm like, it always bothers me whenever I think I've done all of them. I don't think I've used this analogy this year. But the analogy I usually use is if you ask me right now to name all seven of Snow White's dwarves from the fairy tale, I will confidently name you six of Snow White's dwarves and I will forget one of them. And then in another like hour, like at the end of this video, probably hopefully not a whole hour. If you ask me again to name seven of the Snow White's dwarves, I will also name you six, but I will have forgotten a different one and I'll have remembered a new one. So I will always be able to name six of Snow White's dwarves, but not the same six. That's how my brain works. So for those of you that are unhappy about having memorized the polyatomic ions, honestly, I feel for you. I really do. I actually memorize things relatively easily, but I, only because I've figured out how my brain work. And I've had to do a lot of brute force memorizing in my life. What's next? Bonding. So I mentioned this, but let's, let's go ahead and talk about ionic bonding. The big thing with ionic bonding is we need charges. Whole charges. So we have a positive charge that is attracted to a negative charge. So that's really the biggest thing with ionic bonding. So there's more complicated ways to talk about this. So we can call these electrostatic attractions. Because that is also what they are. We can also call these Coulombic interactions. I think in class, I might have shown you y'all Coulomb's law really quickly. Or basically, you can talk about the force that puts these together being equal to the charges divided by the distance. So we don't cover lattice energy anymore. It's actually one of the topics I really enjoyed. But I'm laughing a little bit because we, to put in the workshops on Fridays, we cut a fair amount of material. And when we were in that meeting, all the instructors to talk about what are we going to keep and what are we going to cut? I was brutal. I, I was, I was the one that came to the table and I was like, we have got to get rid of this. And therefore got the most pushback and towards the end of the meeting, I was like, you asked me to cut a third, a third of all the material that we ever covered. So I cut a third of all the material. But I was actually really sad to lose lattice energy, to, to be honest. Because I actually really enjoy lattice energy. So I'm going to take a moment, actually, and show you what toys I have. So these are supposed to represent a sodium ion and a chloride ion. That's what these are for. Now, because in the macroscopic real world where I get to hold things in my hand, there is no point charges in real life. But what these do, do is they are attracted to each other. And they will, they will naturally be attracted to each other. So luckily, I have a science toy that will demonstrate this for me. But this notion of I have an individual thing and another individual thing, and they are attracted to each other, and that's what holds them together. This is an ionic bond. So I can't take these apart. I can put them back together. In the real worlds, yes, I do still have it as a toy. But in the real world, they actually form a lattice. Because as you might imagine, this notion of I have one of each, this is our empirical formula essentially. But since, you know, there's lots and lots and lots and lots of ions in a gram of this, they actually form a whole lattice all to themselves. So you'll get a whole bunch of them to all come together because it turns out that that positively charged thing is attracted to all of the negatively charged things that it's near. So these will actually form whole lattice structures. This is also when you start to get into things like a variety of minerals, gemstones, things like that. Why I usually get some really interesting crystal patterns is because of some of those attractions. But yeah, so ionic tractions, positives, negatives going together is really what we're talking, trying to talk about in here. And that's different from electrons being shared in a covalent bond. So this is, these are not shared. This, this is the like, I could pull them apart. Life is good. When I talk about ionic interactions, that's more going to be things like a water molecule. And this one, like, that's actually a great example because, because this is a model, if I really wanted to, I could theoretically pry these apart. But, but overall, like I shouldn't be able to. And since I cut my nails pretty short, I actually can't. Good. Because they're sharing electrons. So these white things up here are supposed to be hydrogens. This red one down here is supposed to be oxygen. And this is a covalent compound. And those covalent bonds keep things together, but they are sharing electrons. So they are not separate things. The hydrogen and the, the hydrogens and the oxygens form one molecule altogether. And those are going to hang out together versus my sodium chloride that I can absolutely pull back apart into my sodium and my green chloride ion. So I'm hoping that that helps. If you remind me, I have toys in my office. Perhaps unsurprisingly, I've got lots of toys in my office. I am a large child. Highly recommend that when you do find a life partner, you get somebody who has similar ideas of play because my partner and I in Target absolutely go to the toy aisle every single time, which honestly is why we don't go to Target very often because we come home with stuff we do not need. So even though it's awfully convenient, we don't, I try not to go to Target. Okay, I think I talked about ionic bonding. I hope that's enough. I don't know. If it's not, come talk to me. Ranking bonds with percent ionic character or polarity. Yeah, let's talk about that. So what do I want? I'm going to do a carbon to carbon. I'm going to do a carbon to oxygen. I'm going to do a carbon to fluorine. That sounds good. And what I want to do is I want to rank. Oh, I'm going to add one more. Sodium chloride. Rank from greatest. Great. That's not how we say, let's say that greatest to least. And this is where we can say things like percent ionic character. So that's what I'm going to put for this question. So greatest percent ionic character is going to be the ionic compound. Ta-da. Then after this, I want the most polar. So the thing is, is that if, if the question only had these carbons in it, if the question only had these carbon bonds, and if that was the only thing that I had, this question could actually be in terms of polarity. If I add something that's ionic, I can't use that anymore because that bond is not polar. It's ionic. It's so exceptionally not a covalent bond that I can't use the covalent word to describe it. I think this is, coming up with a good analogy for this is a little bit strange only because honestly, we keep modifying the English language. I think if I was trying to describe something like, I keep thinking about like things like shoes or vehicles because I'm always looking for an analogy that people have experienced. So I'm trying to think of things you guys experienced because like you could talk about vehicles and like cars, and if you keep going like a car that's smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller, eventually you get to something that doesn't count as a car anymore. Or if it's larger and larger and larger, and eventually you need to call that like an SUV or you need to call that something different because it's no longer a car. It now has elevated itself beyond what we usually think of just as a car. I guess that works. So sodium chloride is ionic. So it's the most ionic thing on this list. When we say percent ionic character, we sometimes can interchange that with polarity because there's a spectrum of ionic to non-polar. And if we're going to put ionic on this scale, then we're going to call it percent ionic character. However, if we're thinking about the scale a little bit differently and we just want the scale to be polar to non-polar, and there's no ionic in here, we could just call this polarity. So that's the oddity is if we have a smaller scale, then we don't need to call it percent ionic character. If our scale is larger, we're more likely to use percent ionic character. Both of them work. Both of them are things y'all should be familiar enough with to know how to answer the question. So then I want the most polar. So this is ionic. So then I want the most polar thing. To do that, I do want a periodic table. Where did it go? There did it go? Here's fluorine, oxygen, carbon. So fluorine is the most electronegative. So when I'm looking at the difference between carbon and fluorine, I'm going to have fluorine be the most electronegative, carbon be the least electronegative. The greater the difference between them, the more polar the bond. So the greater the difference between them, the more polar the bond. So my carbon to fluorine is next. And then my carbon to oxygen. And lastly, my carbon to carbon. Since carbon and carbon are the exact same, they're going to be the least polar out of the set. So hopefully that helps with some ranking. Electrion activity trends. It's going to copy all my scribbles, isn't it? No, awesome. Okay. So there is a pattern that Dr. Deekman covers. I actually really like it because we basically need to start with fluorine for the most electronegative. But then we go from oxygen to chlorine, and then we go from nitrogen to sulfur. Then we go to carbon to phosphorus. So if somebody referred to this as a backward Z. And I understand that if we actually gave y'all the table with the actual numbers on it, you guys could tell me exactly how electronegative something was. But the goal is to be able to do this with a periodic table and with a periodic table alone. So because of that So because of that fact, um, we're gonna ask y'all to remember. That you can essentially use this backwards Z. Um, so we, so if we were ranking all of these, we would think of fluorine as the most electronegative. And then oxygen, and then chlorine, and then nitrogen, and then sulfur, and then carbon. I guess, and then phosphorus is, is the list we would come up with based on this. Um, so even, even though, even though, um. You could have a table with the actual numbers in it, we would be expecting you guys to think about this more that backwards Z way. As again, you should definitely be able to know that oxygen is more electronegative than chlorine, thinking about. That you, that you can compare them even though they look like they're the same distance away from fluorine. Lewis structure, formal charge, octet. I am looking for. Um, need another example. I had a whole list of examples there. They are. I have way too many papers on my desk. Let's do, I'm gonna do two examples. Um. Uh, I am cheating a little bit. I, the Dr. Deekman had a workshop, uh, and there were extra papers in the classroom. Uh, so these are ones I haven't gotten to do yet. Um, which make them lovely because we have to talk to them together. Also hoping that one of these, let me talk about the octet rule. Uh, let's see. So oxygen, so we're either the one left first, uh, oxygen into fluorines. So this is six valence electrons plus two times seven, so that's six plus fourteen, which is twenty. Yes, I am gonna grab my calculator to count my electrons because I don't want to mess up. Uh, the least electronegative atom goes in the middle, which has to be oxygen, fluorine is to the side. Uh, I'm gonna move my twenty up here so I can count. Um, no element left behind, bond everything together, so I just used four. And bonds. Um, I therefore have. Nope, sixteen, sixteen left. So now I'm gonna use. Two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen. So I use all my electrons. They are all here. The next thing I wanna do is think about octets. So I wanna ask, is my fluorine sharing eight electrons? And it is, cause I've got uh, six dots here and I've got two shared electrons in the bond. So this is sharing. Two electrons in a bond, plus six in lone pairs. Eight electrons. Octet's fine. Um, this fluorine looks exactly the same, so it's doing the same thing. So same, same thought process. This oxygen here in the middle has four electrons in bonds. As four electrons in lone pairs. As dots, that's also equal to eight. So octets, just fine. So that's looking really good for our structure. What I wanna do. Is also think about this in terms of formal charge. So, cause the thing is, is that that was octet. So what we just did is thinking about this as octets. Do I have enough electrons around each element? So now what I actually wanna do is something different, which is formal charge. So when I think about formal charge, I have to go ahead and analyze something similar, but different. So for formal charge, what I need to think through is I need to think through the valence electrons. Half. Of the bonded electrons. Or the lines. And then all electrons in lone pairs. We're basically pretending. We are basically pretending like this molecule is getting a divorce. And it's not gonna be together anymore. So for example, this. Bond here is really, and this bond here, they're both actually two electrons that are shared. So when I start to then think about formal charge, I'm actually thinking about just this fluorine by itself. But again, we're gonna go ahead and think through this. So I need the valence electrons of the fluorine. Which is seven, minus the number of lines to it, which is just one. But this is also half of the bonded electrons. So there are two electrons in the bond. I'm gonna count one of them for the fluorine. I'm gonna count one of them for the oxygen. Minus all the dots, all the electrons in lone pairs, which is six. And that gives me zero. That's gonna be true for both this fluorine and this fluorine, cause you might notice that they're the same. So fluorine A and fluorine B are the same. But we do also wanna do oxygen. The same general idea for my oxygen. I have six valence electrons. It is two lines. But again, that means it was sharing four electrons. I'm counting half. Of all the electrons in those bonds. So for every bond that oxygen has, one of the electrons goes to fluorine. One of the electrons goes to oxygen. So two lines overall, and then one, two, three, four. On four electrons and lone pairs, also zero. So there's my formal charge. So what formal charge shows me is since I have all of these lovely zeros here on the right. That my electrons are as evenly distributed as possible. Um, so this is gonna be a good structure overall, because I have spread out my electrons as much as I can. Sorry, the more I talk, the more I realize I did not take my allergy pill. I don't know about y'all, but what they're changing, allergy time. Um, so a lot of zeros is what we wanna see, cause it usually tells us that we have spread out our electrons, um, well. All right, next up, uh, ICL four with the positive charge. So iodine and chlorine are both in group seven A. Um, so this is basically seven plus four times seven. Um, which is thirty-five, but I have a positive charge. Uh, which means I subtract one. I know, but that's because it's missing an electron. Positive charge takes away electrons. So I have thirty-four electrons. Uh, least electronegative atom goes in the center. Symmetry is also preferred, since I have four chlorines and one iodine. But also when you look at the periodic table, iodine's lower on the chart, so it's gonna have a lower electronegativity anyway. So iodine at the bottom and chlorines all around. So one, two, three, four. I do do my chlorines in cursive, so again, I don't get confused between chlorine and carbon. Um, so for those of you who had admin class, you might notice. I never complain if someone cannot read my handwriting because sometimes I can't read my handwriting, so. I don't blame them. Okay. Um, they're in order. No atom left behinds. Uh, I just used eight electrons in bonds. I have how many left over? Need my calculator. Twenty-six. Fabulous. So now comes putting in electrons, um, as dots. Uh, two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen. Eighteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four. So. I have two electrons left over. I'm gonna put them on the central atom. Is that the thing I get to do? Ta-da. Now let's see, so, um, when you have extra electrons, putting them on the central atom. Is what our list of instructions for. Um, Lewis structures says. So that's how I know to do that. Keep in mind that making sure that you can count the total number of valence electrons is also part of why this all works. Um. We do wanna go ahead and do formal charge. The nice thing here is all of my chlorines right now are identical. So, uh, we should check octets, though. Blah. Um, so here is my chlorine, and it's got two electrons at a bond plus two, four, and six. So it's sharing a grand total of eight electrons. So my octet is fine. Then my uh, iodine here is sharing two, four, six, eight electrons, and we has two more. Um, so it has ten electrons. We double check and make sure that that's okay. We're gonna do that by coming to the periodic table and taking a look at the fact that if I draw a line. Between my second and third period, uh, as long as my element is in the third period or below. So I, so silicon, phosphorus, sulfur, chlorine, all fine. Uh, and iodine certainly is, um, then it can have what we refer to as an expanded octet. So this is totally fine. Iodine is in third period or below, it can have expanded octet, life is good. So that is okay, totally allowed. Um, so that does mean that it violates the octet rule, that does mean that it has more than eight. Um, but it's in third period or below, so this is a valid Lewis structure. Next up, uh, formal charge. Um. Sorry, I was thinking if I wanted to copy it over, if I wanted to keep drawing on the same molecule, I'm gonna copy it over. So that way, we hopefully can differentiate between formal charge and octet because. Uh, for, the difference between formal charge and octet, um, is a little bit strange. I don't like to teach both of those on the same day. Um. But in an exam review, I don't have a choice. Um, so formal charge. So we're doing valence minus lines, minus dots. Um, seven valence electrons, one line, or again, half of all the bonded electrons. Minus all the electrons that just belonged to it, which is six, zero. All my chlorines are the same. Need to check iodine. Iodine, seven valence electrons, four lines, um, two dots, positive one. Now here's the game. All of my chlorines are zero. Every single one of my chlorines is zero. My iodine has a positive one for a formal charge. So the question is, is this the best we can do? Because we could change this. Um, so I could do things like, I could go ahead and slide. That lone pair from. Uh, like the little hat to in a bond. Um, so I could do this guy. Um, and while that might look a little weird, keep in mind, and I'll go back to the periodic table. Um, so my iodine now has ten electrons still around it, and now so does my chlorine. When I go back to the periodic table, though, chlorine's in third period, so chlorine can do that. It's okay. That's a valid Lewis structure. Um, but when I come around to my formal charges, this chlorine is still gonna have the seven minus one minus six for zero. Um, my iodine, what happened to iodine? Seven minus five, minus zero. Oh, this got worse. Um. And what happened to chlorine? Um, seven, I haven't done this problem before. I actually didn't know. Uh, seven minus two minus six, uh, is now, um, negative one. Um, so this did not get better. This is worse. Um. So, the, so this is worse, this is worse, this is better. Um, so the thing is, when we're trying to decide this, when we talk about formal charge. One of the things about formal charge is I have a positive one here. Because my whole compound, oh, I should have put the brackets around it, that's what I'm missing. Cause my whole compound has a positive charge, one. I should have put brackets around this whole thing. Oh god. I'm so sorry, this looks terrible. Um. Gonna redraw this real quick, just, just to put the brackets around it. Two. Positive charge. Now at least the brackets are there, and they're not over a bunch of math. Um, my point is that because this entire molecule has a positive charge. In your formal charges, you're also going to have a positive charge you cannot get rid of. Um, so this basically tells you. That somewhere. There will be. A positive formal charge. At least there should be, assuming that you counted all your electrons correctly. There should be. So then the real question becomes, going back to the periodic table again. Between iodine and chlorine. Which is more likely? Or more stable, I should really say. More stable to carry. A positive formal charge. And what we're looking here for, since it's a positive formal charge, we're looking for the least electronegative atom. And. Since we actually already had to decide that, back when we first made this compound. The one lower on the chart, farther away from fluorine, is the least electronegative atom. So it turns out. Um, so it turns out that the structure as drawn. Granted preferably with the positive charge in the brackets, is the best structure. Even though I have a formal charge, a positive one on the iodine. My options are to have the positive charge somewhere, or to spread my electrons out in such a way that the iodine has a greater positive charge. So it's only a positive charge, a positive one, actually doing pretty well on this. So. That actually is the best structure we're gonna be able to draw, but preferably with the brackets around it. So that's, that's our structure, by formal charge. Okay, where's my list? How are we doing? How are you doing? Okay, that was my last checkmark. Lewis structure, formal charge, octet. So, um. Whenever I think about, did, did we cover everything? Um, the answer to that's basically always no. Um, sorry, wrong class. Um, also wrong class. Look what I was working on, one of my other classes. I wanted to put up. Um. My chapter six, uh, because when it does come to octets. Uh, you should keep in mind that you can't have an expanded octet in third period or below. Um, but you're also gonna have some exceptions. So I didn't do any exceptions with boron. Which only gets six, um, shared electrons, or beryllium, which has four shared electrons, or even hydrogen. Uh, which only has two shared electrons. So do keep in mind that you, there are. Violations to the octet rule that are stable, uh, but they are. Violations of them. So keep that in mind as y'all are studying. Uh, don't forget to take a look at the fall twenty-three exam if you haven't done so already. Um, that's definitely useful. And just ask, ask questions. Uh, chemistry clinics open, uh, peer tutoring's open. There's lots of things to help you guys out. We've got office hours. That are posted in seven oh one section. Um, so come on out, come see us, and get some questions answered. Hope you guys are having a great day. I'll talk to you later. Good luck.